That's what we do though.
All right, I think go ahead and call the meeting to order. Here. I'll be number one.
Here.
I'll be number two. Here. That's my uh. I'll be number three.
Here.
Right, if anyone would stand up there. Okay, please. Also, which is accurate.
In the name of Jesus, dear heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord, in the only way we know how, asking you to please forgive us for all of our sins. Lord, we thank you for your grace and your mercy. God, we thank you for your so good to us. Lord, we thank you for how you look beyond our many, many faults and you see our needs. Lord, I ask that you look down on each and every one of us. God, you know all about us, you know what we all stand and need of. Lord, I ask that you continue to bless us and the balance of our families. And Lord, I ask that you bless this meeting. Help us to do, God, everything pleasing unto you. And God, I'll be so careful to give you all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise in Jesus' holy name we pray. And everybody say amen.
Amen.
Our collective allegiance to the pride of the United States of America. To everybody who worship saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with never ending justice for all.
All right, we're gonna open up with the first session of public comments. Three minutes per person. If since we're, the podium's kinda not working right now, you can just stand and give your name and address, and then, uh, three minutes.
Okay, um, Ms. Steve McGowan, forty-three, forty-six.
Levak.
Levak. Why did I do that?
Cause you used to do that when you.
Cause I was, oh my goodness, alright, nevermind. Um, anyway, forty-three, forty-six, Blood City Highway. Alright. Um, just can't bear with me for a minute, I took the time to write this down, I don't know if I might repeat myself a little bit, cause I was in a hurry, but, okay. Um, poll trust in the city leaders is about as low as it's ever been. And it's not hard to see why, the former leadership, meaning the past, uh, mayor and stuff, the former leadership, there were plenty of talk of allegations of cricket dealings and underhanded politic tactics and all that. Allegations of misuse of power, financial mismanagement, and a disregard for transparency increasingly surfaced. Alarmed citizens who feared that their local officials were adopting unethical behavior. I think bad things can happen, even in a seemingly quiet, friendly little small town. Public corruption has been a problem throughout the Tri-Cities area, and sadly, Blood City hasn't been immune to it, so, alright. And, uh, while both cities are small towns with a small budget, small budgets can lead to lack of resources. That means that leads to more problems for the town and its people, which leads to unhappy citizens and a town in depreciation because of decreasing population and the interest of the town. How do you grow the budget without killing the pocketbooks of the citizens? Well, first, we'll start by acknowledging, it's not by having chaotic city officials, board members, and citizens who are arguing back and forth, backstabbing each other, and keeping secrets above small circles. Instead, let's move forward a town and its citizens by working together, helping our neighbors, senior citizens, and those that are most in need among us. Maybe it's a disabled citizen, a child in need of extra tutoring from learning disabilities, or training or teaching local talent skills to people, like possibly, uh, teaching computer classes, like at the community center, for people that don't know how to, you know, the older folks that don't properly know how to use a computer. Why not have some computer classes, you know? Maybe we can find a volunteer that would volunteer time services, you know, to teach them, uh, and everything, okay? And then, you can move the town forward by improving the town's appearance, involvement of local community residents and residents of it, then to make the town better for those who live here. Better by improving local resources available to residents and their needs prioritized over new outside residents, businesses, et cetera. Followed by making the town more inviting for new businesses. And followed by making the town more inviting for new businesses, educational and community opportunities to grow. By making it more welcoming, showcasing the town's potential for future growth that benefit its current residents and future leaders and current leaders of the city. Growth that will bring more taxes and revenue to the town. Revenue that benefits everybody, businesses, and leadership alike. Start by communicating with citizens and local businesses. What are their experiences? What are their needs? What ideas do they have for moving the town forward? Okay? What are their current concerns about the town, crime, resources, what is it? Or do they, maybe they got some ideas for improving housing, transportation around here, or what have you? Inform people about how they can get involved with the, with local, with their local community meetings and volunteer services that, you know, cause we could, there might be a masonry man out here that knows how to do this, or we need, we might need a nice sign for the park up here built. Well, maybe that person's willing to, to make the time and stuff, okay? If people feel like they're being a part of the community, they'll do it. If they feel like they're getting something back out of this community, they'll do more. But when they sit back and all they see is fighting, nothing ever getting accomplished, the town going down the crapper, then they're not, they're, they'll be unhappy. And they're not gonna be easy to please, in the end. Okay. One of the best ways ordinary unelected citizens can help make things run more efficiently and transparent is to attend public meetings. Attendance at board meetings in small towns across, uh, the US often mean less than two thousand people in the town are fully aware that, of things, they're more aware of things going on in their town than, say, the people that live in the big city, because it's so much close knit, and, um, everybody kinda knows everybody in most cases and what have you, okay? Now, it's all human that you're gonna get resistance from people, cause not everybody likes change. But sometimes we have to pull our packs up and admit that things gotta change, okay? If you're gonna get any better, we're gonna have to change some, okay? I'm not saying we gotta raise taxes to, to, uh, the level that people can't afford or something like that, but to say that you'll never raise taxes, or you'll never do this or that, you know, you're defeating your purpose because you're gonna have to pass revenue, something, okay? Now, where people get mad about the taxes, to give you an example, like with us, we called up here, we seen somebody over at the car wash, sitting over there doing drugs one night. Okay, we called the law. There's no law to be called. I mean, you know, there was no dispatcher, nobody in the audience.
Twenty-third, nine forty-one PM.
Yeah, yeah. We were sitting down on the front porch. And that same person's been back to the car wash, and that same person's been back to that car wash, you know, doing the same thing, so they're going in between a residential place and the car, which is what we're doing.
Um, okay, and thank you so much, I appreciate you, three minutes, but if you would like, stay where you are, and at the end, we're gonna have another three minutes.
Okay, let's, let's still go.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. I've got a lot more, so, I'll finish for you. I, I appreciate you, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Going along with what the lady in the front just said, I agree with her a hundred percent. And I kinda owe it to Jerry that I'm not mentioning it, probably have exposed it again to everyone. But Jerry Bollama has probably been, if not the most, one of the most influential being in this town, that has done more for this town than any board, any mayor, any elected official could ever do. He did that, uh, just like she said, being involved in the community. Jerry started Rescue Squad, helped start a fire department, he got equipment for a pay for. I've been hanging at the site after you. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. And if you'd just give your name and address, we're following.
Oh, uh, Buford T. Bush.
Thank you, Buford. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hello. Uh, my name is Barrett Levak, I live at forty-three, forty-six Blood City Highway, I'm a parent of a young man, and probably gonna.
Oh, love.
Um, so I just had a couple of questions.
You'll learn.
Following up on actually that, that story, this is all positive, at least, I'm just kinda curious. How many police officers are in town?
Yeah, how many do we have? So I can give that information for you eventually, we just handed it out, so I would give you an accurate number, but I gave that information to you and they scheduled.
Okay, and, um, there is a dispatcher, I'm assuming?
Sullivan County.
Sullivan County dispatch.
So there's no Blood City dispatch, no, it's Sullivan County?
No, there, there's a non-mercy number, but it would be number one.
Is there, is there any, um, are there any hours the police department, like posted? I, I, I haven't been in the back for a minute, so I, cause.
So I'll give that information to you too, I wanna verify with the chief.
Okay, because the issue is, I said, the twenty-third, she's, she either back or something else. Not on the front side, not even that. And I'm not here to bash people for drug issues, that's, you don't wake up.
It's not illness, but.
You don't wake up and say, you know, I do try something that takes my teeth off my head two years later, usually I have trauma or something going on, it's impossible to do that. You know what I mean, so I'm not here to get in trouble, but, um, just wanted to check on that, because I've called, like, three times, I've called the police department, there have been no answers. And I think the police department does their job here, and also, they make a chunk of revenue, around two hundred twelve thousand, I think I saw on the last one. So they make a lot of revenues, I haven't been twenty-four hours, would be a good thing, because as we found out at least in the last one, we have that issue down the road towards, going towards, if you're going to learn about them, like, you know, like where that drug issue is, that we're having some issues with drugs, and how things go. So we're having these issues anyway, so having a part-time police department, obviously financially needed to be funded, but at the same time, it's kinda, well, money comes from a lot of it. And my wife did bring up the, there's been a lot of back and forth, watching people as I've watched the meetings, kinda going at each other. And we don't, we don't need that. Not, not when it comes to, like, end this room here. Obviously, if people have issues with each other, I can tell, it's clear it's a thing, you know, watching it. So it's never helpful, especially when it's eighteen hundred people in this town. You know, we're not like, we're not chomping city, we all hopefully see each other on the streets sometimes. But anyway, we just finished up, because I'm kinda, um, I'll get to more of these later, the more I've done of shit. I do wanna ask about the sidewalks, so, um, when is the public school starting?
I don't have that information that, that, I can give to you as well.
Okay, I would like to put in a personal question. Cause I live right, we live right in front of work, so everyone knows, like, her husband's buying us a brand new street, she's got a waiting desk here. She got the back door. But, uh, what was I talking about, sorry, I had a.
Sidewalks.
Thank you, sidewalks. But when they did the construction across the road there, up on those hills, where the, the car wash is behind it, when they're all back, the rain wash something come down, and that's when our placement decided flood all the time, pretty much. And that was, and so, it'd be nice if there was at least one or two grates in front somewhere where it's not all, where brains are all coming down the hill, coming down there and just rushing to our house, you know? So I would be nice if that happened, just because, you know, we have, it's thanks. So yeah, it's foundations crap, we'll be here, like, I'm done fixing it, it's a little work.
Alright, we're at three minutes. Okay, thank you. Yeah, um, yes.
Thank you.
Alright, would anyone else like to speak? Alright, we're gonna go ahead and start with the meeting. Alright, um, the very first item on the workshop is the Blood City Family Committee events calendar, and, um, we wanna go ahead and let the, uh, president of the Blood City Family Committee go ahead and speak. There is, um, a calendar that you have had approved, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Because, um, we actually made our calendar before the administration, um, left, and it had no three at that time. The, uh, administration left, and the two was kinda dropped in on, lack of course, to take over the, um, the family committee. So I presented a new administration with the calendar and asked everybody to look over it, and please let me know if there's any problems. And, uh, I just wanna see everything run as smooth as possible, so. And I have talked to different ones about it, and also, uh, again, the resolution is something that has been brought to my attention, that something needs to be passed to help protect the Blood City Family Committee going forward and in the future. Um, Johnson City, Farmers Market, the Leaden Whistle, a lot of the organizations around our whole area have resolutions and things in place that help protect their organization. So this is something that should've been done way back when, it will start in August of twenty-twenty-two. I realize with new administration and things, and I'm bored, you have to get rebooked. But with vendor markets and things like that, you cannot wait until last minute to acquire vendors. If you do that, you just do not have market. And most of these vendors, they're, they've been there before even a year. So you have to kinda go out there and, and put your dates out there that you're gonna have your markets, so that you can acquire, um, some quality vendors, especially vendors here local. We wanna get, you know, our local people involved. It also helps them, helps our economy, helps our growth, our town, um, and, you know, of course, we just, we wanna see blood city grow, and they will, that's our main goal. We wanna bring some life back into our whole town.
Figure of twenty-twenty-five calendar events was approved by the previous town manager, correct? Okay, um, so you're wanting to make sure that the events that you had approved, that they're still going to happen.
Right.
Now, I know that, have, have locations been approved? Have you been?
Yes, one patients were approved, they were already approved. As far as, like, the ball field and everything, we checked with the people over the ball field, they said it was good, um, even with the impact, they said everything was fine there. So everything had already been approved before the calendar was ever put out there.
Okay, so we, we, as a board, need to discuss making sure that the events that were already approved can still go forward. There have been adjustments made, um, to the Farmers Market that happened every Saturday and Sunday. The town manager thought it best and decided that in the parking lot was just too much congestion, and she made the decision to move the weekend Farmers Market, which is Saturday and Sunday. If it was acceptable, yes.
Sorry, it's just Saturday.
Saturday. Saturday. Not Sundays, my apologies. That, that would be, um, at Wells Park. There is a better facility there, you don't have the boats, the traffic coming and going, there's parking at the, in the overflow lot, and there is also the pavilion. And so, the town manager determined that would be where that event, that event would be held. She requested it, it was approved.
Okay, I have a question, what do you mean it's reserved?
I do believe, and I'll have to check with the town manager, I'll check with Michelle, I don't believe that it had been reserved for that time period.
Okay. Cause I know it's gonna be reserved in May. Well, our, the Farmers Market doesn't start until May seventeen, and I, I did talk to Michelle, there was someone that wanted to reserve it by the first, or May second. I'm not sure, I was glad they, cause I know that my nephew's graduating from college and my sister had reserved it sometime. But we will be out by one, like, one fifteen, one thirty at the latest. We, we usually start packing that early, around twelve thirty, twelve forty-five, and we're usually, I'll pack that and I'll, I'll buy one fifteen, one thirty.
You may wanna check on that time, cause I know she's been reserved it.
Sure, and if it's been reserved, that adjustment will be.
Oh, absolutely.
Is that gonna be a little bit too close to the ball field and the voters over there across the street and?
The, the actual test for the.
I don't know, um, congestion, unless, unless the police are gonna be involved in this, so. And that is something I did make as a question, are the police going to be involved?
Have you got a question?
We honestly do not need police presence ever then, as far as them controlling the area as they usually do. You know, at a market, at a larger market, like with the spring market and that, we may need them to control that area and work. I won't foresee it being as congested as it was in the past. Since we have been working with the, uh, ball field executives a lot closer, they are not gonna have their games during our events.
And you, and I know that's being coordinated, because that's from Brandon Anthony and, uh, the Patriot Baseball, Junior Patriot Baseball League.
The only thing that we may need as far as help from the town is possible homes to put up there, where the vendors will be set up during the larger markets.
And you'll set that, you can set that up with the town manager? So have that, you know?
Cousins, any festival will then be at the ball field, the Farmers Market will be over at the pavilion.
At, at the pavilion, not in Wells Park, not of course, where the place.
I guess. Then it won't be in the road?
No.
Okay, not in the road? Not in the road.
Now, in the parking area, I do believe they plan a food truck?
Yes, we have an alternate food truck every weekend, and we can get one, but, um, we do have a lot of few people that don't want to participate. They provide their own power and water and everything, so it's something that's gonna be reaching off the city. Um, if anything, it's gonna be helping boost the economy in that area. The Fat House usually works or opens up about like noon, a lot. Town Waters, uh, there with their, um, wild fishing shop, the bait shop, and it's gonna be helping that, that area, they are the businesses.
Maybe, yeah, I think I need to pull these backs out, because I don't think we're gonna get all the information.
Okay, so I'm gonna pull.
I'm recording too, I'm recording too, so I can hopefully get everyone.
You want me to go on and put that up too? I would just do that one.
You can put that up too, too.
Are we doing the video in?
The video is on top, uh, the audio is this right now, but, uh, hopefully.
Can I ask a question in regards to the certain ladies' plans for the family committee and the Farmers Market, with your permission, Mayor?
You sure?
Yes.
I think one of the reasons that the town has such a big turnout for Heritage Days is because we have Heritage Days on Main Street in Blood City where everything started. I mean, that is where Blood City's heritage really come from. And just a general question to you, have you thought about moving some of your activities to Main Street and with the city's assistance? You know, having more functions on State, on Main Street?
Well, I mean, that, that's something that they may, I don't know what to consider in the future, and I would be, I'll for, you know, town involvement. The committee is, you know, it's a volunteer type thing. I actually, I'm gonna go back to work, I'll be doing what I'm doing, but I don't wanna see this committee fail. I think it's important to the town, and that's why I'm voting my time. I wanna see the town grow, I wanna see it be better. When my parents were gone, this town was, but there was a lot going on. So, you know, uh, as far as the town, I mean, I, I wanna cooperate with the town.
I agree a hundred percent.
And future plans, future plans will be worked out, and, I mean, everyone wants Blood City to succeed, the sky is the limit, and I think.
Saturday is the biggest day for that little league to play ball. They play, they, Saturday morning, I think, they, every team's playing. I sit over there and I see them parking in front of the caboose on Saturdays, it is full. And so what you gonna have, you gonna have a mess there like you had last Saturday. I'm sure you saw it, Larry, you were down there.
So Saturday, they don't have games?
They don't have baseball games on Saturday down there?
Only one that they're, they've got a handicap team.
So they do handicap now?
And they, and they told her that they would work around, that they've got a few kids, and, you know.
Oh, okay, okay.
But they're not sk, I understand they're not skis, and it's gonna be Monday through Friday, and they're doing that, the ICC, tiny flats in Blood City.
Very, very news.
So that's good, that's very good.
I'm there, that's.
I hope you're participating in your own activities.
Well, awesome, I mean, we want, that's, you gonna go as your daughter, you know?
And I know we're out of order here, but it seems like when we have activities on Main Street, that's ours. That's the family, that's the city, that's the town.
And that's the town.
Down here, we're subject to heavy traffic, everything going on, you know, a lot of people traveling to come to the diner. Let's have some stuff for us up here.
I'd also made the suggestion too, talking about the food trucks, is you could do something either bi-weekly or monthly, have a food truck day, cause you have all that space by the river. You're bringing people into town, you have to sell them food, you'd also have something on the side too, if you want to make money. But honestly, food trucks are easy.
These are all awesome ideas, and we would love to do these things. Um, I will tell you though, that, um, Sarah has expressed that the reason they do the Farmers, well, Sarah, I'll let you say it. They, they, people like the lake, they like the common Farmers Market on the lake, that's, that's the draw for them, so, you know, she does appreciate that, but.
And when it comes.
Main Street's special, I mean, that would be love to build a.
Her welcome dog, right?
And also, when it comes to something like food trucks or like Farmers Markets, I mean, I understand heritage day does really well, but you also have all the main, the main drive is down to Blood City Highway, we're on our now. So putting them, putting like Farmers Market on this road, or even the food truck idea, on this road down by the river would get more people, better, just random versus, that's what we're saying about heritage day. But like, if you gotta get random people to buy things, they drive through Blood City, you want on the road to get them mostly to see on, so, and as I said, food trucks are easy, you know, we just put them out there, you gotta just coordinate it, but you can basically make money on that too.
And that may be something, you know, in the future, once it grows and really takes off, and we have support from townspeople and the community around us, I think, it'll be one.
Cause you have all that lakes on property, and there's so much you could do with it.
A lot of things.
What I think we need to do is we need to schedule a meeting where everyone comes in and we, like you said, bring our ideas. Because we have a town manager now who is gung ho, owner of the town, and she wants it to succeed. She wants people to come in. I'm speaking for her, but these are things that she said to me. If it might outlive, just let me know.
Well, I hope it.
So, um, Jerry wants to say something?
Well, the only problem with Main Street, and I love the ideal, and over the years I've done a lot of stuff here and there, but it's, it's a state.
I've done a lot of stuff here and there, but it's a state road, you know, it comes before you come, comes up, and then you got to get a state permit, and there's a lot of things, and then you got other businesses, not a lot of it, Pinelove and Pizza Place, a couple of churches that see it.
I forgot that.
But I always wanted to kind of drop back maybe like Cedar Street, one street, you know, and have a smaller event, music or whatever it is, speakers, some kind of, you know, program of some type. Most of that is dead now, but Dave's other stuff is play baseball, have a plus six balls, and they'd have a reunion and, you know, and food and stuff, and those, you know, storytelling and stuff like that.
There you go.
So we are planning some stuff with the museum, maybe in the near future with speakers, and maybe just a Blood City history, I mean, come in and tell old stories, tell stories, you know, and record and stuff, so, okay then, so we are, you know, working on that end of it without the, you know, not the city. But that is a problem with, anytime you go through our parking, closing off the streets, people's houses and so forth, so that's only kind of doing once a year.
And Lord, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, please.
No disrespect whatsoever, but isn't that what workshops are, an open meeting?
Yes, I guess I want to have it more, so people, because the agenda needs to say this. So I'd love to have an agenda that says, come out, I'll talk, so everyone can come, including Mr. Harmon, who is just a big smile on his face.
I'm just laughing, I'm just having a good time. Do you want to?
That's good.
Another thing, like, a lot of people, you know, have had the same issues we had, like when the cops or whatever, maybe having like coffee with the cop down at the park or something one day, you know, do some events like that where you introduce your police department, your town officials and stuff to your people. And during that event, you have like flyers made up, questionnaires and stuff, and allow your people to give their ideals. Through, you know, fill out these questionnaires, like the police department can have a questionnaire, what do you feel like would be better for this department, whatever, you know, and let people fill out questionnaires and drop them in a box for you, and then you take all that.
And that would work people too.
Yeah, and you take all that information then and combine it and to figure out what do we need the most, because that way you get what people around here are looking for.
And our administrative office as well.
And the mayor and all you guys can get together and read each one and see who has the most quality of what they want done in this city.
And another idea, like, for, like, to, the more you beautify the place and stuff, you know, the more proud people are going to be of it and all that. So, you know, and there are ways of raising money, like, for instance, let's just say we were going to build a second shelter down in the park. All right, we're going to have us a yard sale or something, community yard sale, and all the proceeds go for the project down there. All right, we might have somebody that volunteered their services to build it, and we just have to pay, the city pays for them.
Cheers. Sarah Malone is working to get, she's over the family committee and they do a lot of these things. You were wanting to say something?
Well, the idea she had about the administration coming out, you also do that during our opening day if you don't have anything scheduled at farmer's market. You also come down there and.
Meet the city.
And we could promote that and just have a big talk.
And maybe, think of a, you know, we need to find a couple of places in town where you can put what I want to call community bulletin boards, okay? Everybody don't go to the, to the post office unfortunately, because some people are unable to get out or whatever. Then you got those that came through the, came through the online thing because they don't know how. So we really do need a couple of bulletin boards somewhere to where we can put a.
Run a bar key round there.
Well, I understand that, but that marquee can't suffice for everything.
You don't put it down in the river area.
You don't have more than just that marquee.
All right, I have a great suggestion though, these ideas are fantastic, you really should partner with Sarah Malone from the family committee. She's, she's, what you're saying, she's wanting.
I mean, but we do. Anybody in here is welcome to come to our meetings. Y'all can follow us on Facebook, go to our website at bloodcityfamily.org, look at our calendar and see when our meetings are, and we usually have them at ICC on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month. I just want to see this place grow and get bigger and do better than what it's been.
We got places like.
All right. So getting back to the order of the family committee, do you feel comfortable that this has been addressed? Do you, I mean, we can work on a resolution, it would, I'd like to see the resolution and present for the other resolutions that you've seen from Johnson City and Bristol and Farmer's Markets. And you've been working with Heather.
Heather, she actually lives in Pine Flats, and she's over at Johnson City Farmer's Market. And she's the one who actually helped the committee get the farmer's market after starting. And so she's going to be present at some of our markets here, and she'll actually be at the Spring Market.
So, just kind of a protection for the events that have already been scheduled, and then where they're going to be will be determined by the town manager, the permitting, and I'm sure she's going to get all that to us and then we'll know how to. All right, I said, all right, I'm sorry. The next item is, we're going to talk about the Roberts Rules of Order, not for workshops, but mainly for meetings, special meetings and regular meetings. Our meetings have been going really, really long, and unfortunately, even though at the beginning it was kind of a nice even take, two and a half hours for a meeting, it's just really long. And I was hoping we'd be kind of just do a basic breakdown of the meeting decorum so that we're all on the same page. So the rules of decorum, there are formal settings and guidelines just to keep civility and respect in discussions. So breakdown in respect and civility, participants should treat each other and the presiding officer with courtesy and respect, and avoid personal attacks and offensive language, but it is nice that when we're talking, when we have the free minutes for the citizens to talk, that we don't talk over them. And I know that we're, it's recommended that we don't say anything, I don't necessarily subscribe to that, but like a back and forth where it just takes a long time and that's difficult. But I think everyone deserves to be heard, and when they do speak, we should make notes and, so we can address things afterwards without taking the time during the meeting, especially information that we don't know. Orly conduct, rules of decorum aim to prevent disruption such as interruptions, side conversations or boisterous behavior. We've got to stop the side conversations just because if the public can't hear us, then it looks like we're being secreted. We want to be absolutely transparent and open, focusing on the issue at hand. Discussions should remain focused on the matter at hand, avoiding irrelevant tangents or personal opinions. Sometimes it's nice to go, you know, just give your view on something, but if we keep running over into things that aren't about the topic, it just drags the meeting out. Rules of decorum provide clear expectations, and it's just everyone, so we don't talk over each other. I was never a fan of the you can speak, you can speak, but I do believe that if one person has the floor and they're speaking on the topic, we don't have a back and forth. Because then we just kind of cut that person off and they're not allowed to speak. So basically refrain from using vulgar and offensive language, only speak when recognized or when it's your turn, refrain from interrupting speakers, give attention and due respect for the speakers, and when we do have someone, you know, who listens to them, but we also, we also can't make promises to them that we can't fulfill. So if we don't know information, it's better to just write it down and follow up with them, so they're not given improper information. Refrain from engaging in just orderly or boisterous conduct, treat everyone courteously, listen to others respectfully, exercise self-control, give open-minded consideration to all three points, and focus on the issues to avoid personalizing a debate. Just a brief rundown, and everyone, you need a cheat sheet for the Roberts Rules, I'm going to get that to everyone. The next topic is the, okay, just want to go over again, the Charter, it is section, Article 3, Section 4. I just want to go over once again the powers that are vested in the Board of Mayor and Alderman. The legislated and all other powers of the town except as otherwise provided by this Charter are delegated by the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and the Board made by ordinance resolution not inconsistent with this Charter prescribe the manner in which any powers of the town shall be exercised, provide all means necessary or proper therefore, and do all things necessary within or without the town or state to protect the rights of the town. The Board shall exercise its powers in session duly assembled, and no member or group of members thereof shall exercise or attempt to exercise the powers conferred upon the Board except through proceedings that are regularly called a meeting. So we just have to be mindful that we work together as a board of Mayor and Alderman, and when we, when we do have questions or, you know, want to consult or confer, it needs to be in an open meeting. So it would be best, you know, not to go out on our own and cause an issue under the eyes of Alderman. So that's just basically what I wanted to remind everyone, so we can move forward and.
All right, if I say this, or any problems or complaints, you take it to the city manager, is that correct?
If you have a complaint, you can absolutely take it to the city manager.
City manager.
She's open to listen.
Right.
But if it is something that you think is regarding a board issue, like you'd like the board to discuss it.
Well, I'm sure the board will have to discuss it if there's a problem.
Yeah, sure.
I just want to make sure everything is followed line by line.
Sure. All righty, so now we're going to move on to the town manager job description, and if you all had seen the information that I sent, there is the town manager position, Article 7, in the Charter, and that's a really good description currently of what is being expected of the town manager. We also have the job description that was done in depth by MTAF Pete Auger, which is similar and a little more detailed. And there was one other item, Carolyn, if you were to run.
Sure.
The ordinance, that ordinance right there, thank you. The other bit of information that is an ordinance that's not listed in here is the social media aspect. This is the ordinance number 2023003. It goes on to say that the town manager is the one who moderates the, what goes on the town page, what goes on the Facebook page, and we can address that as well. But those are what I have gathered for the description of the, for the job description for town manager. Now, you have the opportunity to look at the ordinance, it kind of basic, but it does say what the powers are of the town manager, and as our, as Paul Frye told us at the last meeting we had with Pete Auger, we could use this, but he did give us a more detailed set of guidelines, and if you all are happy with that, if you've read through and you have, and you're agreeing with it, or if you think there should be changes, that's the topic discussing.
You know the job description?
The job description.
Yes. You go to H2.
Are you in the, the test?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we may want to take this one out, so, serves as flood plain administrator and code enforcement official. Because we know that code enforcement official is not going to, that's why it was on the agenda not too long ago, and then the building inspector came up, so.
Right.
I mean, some of this might need to be pulled out and add with, with the caveat that it can be added when we make the ordinance or the resolution or whatever, and that has needed to be stacked again here as well, subject to change. Somehow it's a, I could use this little legal, legal thing, you know, to do something.
All right, sure.
I think if we adopted the flood plain, it came under the town manager part of it and stuff. I know they still have to get other certifications from other places and stuff, but I think that's where the responsibility came back to that one. And then on the code, you know, it's not saying what codes, I mean, we got codes in the Charter and stuff, it's not talking about blaming, and that's a, I mean, it's not talking about the code enforcement for building permits and safety or anything, but we have a lot of codes, you know, that goes through the whole city, that would just be, you know, for buildings and stuff, so, and so we have to think, it's got, have somebody, and once you can hire a person, that, once you've hired them, then that responsibility's come off of it, but I think it's, you probably don't have to leave it until you have somebody to replace it with.
We will never replace a building inspector down here because we simply do not have enough business for you to do.
It's a problem.
And we cannot, and most people do not want to do part-time. I don't know how we're going to deal with that, and apparently it's adding through the state, you have to get permits through the state. But there is a ordinance out there on that landing that's on you, it's like a 70 some pager out there, and that's what scares me, because all in it is like that code enforcement official, and I don't like that.
I was.
I mean, I would say, I would say wipe that one out and it gets in priority.
Thank you, Sarah. How about code enforcement and flood plain administrator?
Thanks for that. We're not going to find a town manager that's certified in code enforcement plain that we have. And our only luck to find a code enforcer in is to find another small town out there that has, has part-time, that hire them on a case-by-case basis.
And swinging back and forth, but that.
We still have the money.
But that was to actually discuss with part-time, but we thank people, can we, Jerry?
Well, just the qualification step and what I looked up at the state step.
It's not easy.
It's really, you've got to have a contractor, and you've got to have a contract license, you have to be, do a business for that type of thing, for at least about three to five years, I think, four to five years, and then you have to have so many hours of schooling, and I can't remember, was it 250 hours? I mean, it was, it was a bunch, I know for broker's license, when I retired, my mom was 280 hours, you had to have it for broker's license, so I mean, it's a lot, and you start to take the classes, it's easy, 20, 30 hours at a time, you know, three, it takes three years.
There are no inspectors to be hired out there right now because all the municipalities have sent inspectors to work in flood areas, so, especially Johnson City, we're having to wait up till a week on inspections.
So I know for building inspector, Amber Torbit reached out, Mayor Venable actually offered the Sullivan County folks to help us out, but that would mean that, and we should address this as a board, there was a list of questions that Amber had asked about, you know, who would do the permitting, who would do, who would get the money for the permit, who, so that option is out there. I do believe that we discussed it with Paul Frye, we can have a discussion about this though, if we, the board would like to.
We have a legality on that.
Well, that's from, if that was performed, if I talked to code enforcement, if you wanted to code enforcement, and they did set that, that they would come down, if they come to Blood City and they cite somebody at their court, well, who's going to be responsible is the Blood City going to take, set the counter suit? Is Blood City going to take it, or is it going to go back to the county? And the county didn't want it back in their lap up in suit. And stuff.
But we don't know, because there was a list of questions that Amber asked, that Amber Torbit asked.
They tried to work it out, and it didn't work. They tried to work it out, and it didn't work. I mean, it died out there. Does it reach the code?
Mayor Laurie, I've called nine people. Nine people I have called. I have all their names down, everything, for these permits to build. All I wanna do, I live at 43, 46, right here. My name is Brenda Gill. And all I'm doing is adding just an eight foot onto my house, one corner, just for a closet. Because the trailer that I live in beside of the house, they're getting ready to move all of that out. They're putting homes down through there. So all I was doing was adding on to that. I've not started. All I did was twirl off because I'm still looking. And I called the city today. I called the main office.
Today? You called here?
No.
If you called Michelle Roberts, Town Manager, she'll give you the information for this.
Yeah, I got, I got the number. And I called them. And she's supposed to call me back then in the morning. But she told me, as long as that was not over five feet from the ground, where somebody can't crawl under there and inspect, I didn't need a permit. Everybody I had talked to has told me the same thing, have they not? They've told me the same thing. As long as you're not over five feet from the ground, you do not have to have a permit.
You're a renter.
They can't crawl under for the grounding issues. And the way, the way that water comes off of the intake when it rains, we're flooded. We are flooded. So where I'm putting that little space, the water's right under it, goes right down in our basement. We've got water standing in the basement now from the other night. It's a mess.
In terms of location, you're right of basement on your property lines. All you gotta do is pull a permit. What's the state like for inspector right now?
Well, I called them. I don't need one because there's no electricity gonna be put in there.
It's just.
It's just like a walk-in closet. It's just a walk-in closet, basically, is all it is. Where I can put my stuff from the trailer in there because I have nowhere else.
So get, get the Town Manager a call tomorrow and keep her, or call the main line and leave a message for her to take it back with you. I can't answer that right now.
Right.
It's been a multi-week thing. I'm just trying to figure it out.
Yeah. I mean, I have, like I said, went to nine, nine, I went to Nashville. I went to Flood City three times. I even drove to Blood, to Bloodville, three times. And the guy over there told me that they did do it here at one time, but then they had so many other ones come in that they knocked us off because we were such a little town. They getting bigger. We needed one. We wasn't making a major, major contract.
Okay. Get, 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 call tomorrow and hopefully it can be worked out.
I would say there'll be really good Code Enforcement. You pay for the trailer, and I'll do it. There you go.
Went back to the police officer.
We offered that to a young man, so it's out there.
And Laurie, she's a, you said correct. If you do not have a Building Inspector, you do not have to pull a Building Permit. If it has electricity, it has to have a state electrical.
Right, but not if there's no electricity.
And it cannot infringe with right of setbacks.
Right. Setbacks.
Setbacks is on your property lines. How far are you going from your property line?
Right on the line.
It's 15 feet.
15 feet.
So you can't build within 15 feet of the property line.
On the sides.
On the sides.
And the side and the back.
Is that 20 in the, in the front?
No.
I digress. I'm sorry. I digress.
Yes, you are correct. I just don't know what it is.
Hey, would you also please call the Town Manager tomorrow and express your interest?
She's gonna love you tomorrow.
Yeah. Man, I've got 35 years, and it ain't gonna be cheap.
Oh, Laurie.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
It's $350 I'm willing to trade. But you already have, you already have qualifications.
Honey, I carry the, I carry the code book in my truck. I'm in it every day.
Thank you, Laurie Johnson.
See, this is about reaching out to people that actually live here. You thought people here that are willing to step up and do more if I know what they know.
We have the men in this town, contractors anyway.
No, I don't know. Anyway.
You know, I've taken people from Flood City. They're coming, somebody out, you know, handing me.
I've never seen him.
Oh, no, not, bro.
I'm 16.
All right, so when it comes, when it comes to this, though, we, if we feel we should take it out, we can take that part out.
Well, I was just thinking, with City Manager, you know, with, with you, but we had a thing with Mayor Wells, where the City Manager, and I'm gonna use this for an example, per se, someone got fired. And they feel like they was fired unjust. That instead of going to the City Manager, the final thing that they appealed for the board. That is something that I have always fought for.
That's certainly.
Yeah. And the reason why I said that is years ago, Ms. Tom, you may remember, when Mayor Wells was the mayor, and there was a young man, his name was James. And he had gotten fired. And Mayor Wells said, you know, her decision is final. He had proved. Two of the older women, all the older women at that time, talked to that young man, but her decision was final. So I feel like we need to get that in there, that if somebody is fired and they want to appeal, that they can appeal to the board instead of.
Is that the guy you're talking about, the board?
Yeah.
He called me on the phone. He resigned.
No, no, he, no, he, because, no, he was fired because it was one Christmas. And I let him come next year on the bus so we could make some money.
So he called me on the phone.
No, 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 no. He worked for us for about two months.
So that's different from the job description, but yes.
But if possible, he doesn't get me in there.
So currently, if an employee is fired, they can take it to the.
Because most places, appeal, you can appeal to somebody, you don't.
But that's not job description.
No, it's not job. But I wanted to throw that in there. Still don't want to appeal to the one that got rid. Exactly.
The thing about you go to the City Manager, if you're not satisfied, hours accomplished, you go to the Mayor. And then from the Mayor, then you would come to the Attorney Law.
Yeah. I've not read any of that in the Charter. Let's see what it's supposed to mean here, which talks about hiring.
I'll get that and send it to you because I've seen it, I've seen the hiring. I think that, you know, if this, then this, then this.
Yeah. I've got the Charter. I mean, I've got the Charter. I think something on the jury, but with Mayor Wells, what we went through, it wasn't like that. So I just don't wanna fall back into that. Because when I first got on the board, that's one thing I always fight for. And it also needs to stay in here. We need to, there are certain people that the City Manager cannot fire.
That, that's true.
Yeah, the ones that work at the pleasure of the board.
The Department Heads.
The Department Heads.
And that's, that's in the Charter.
That's in the Charter. One thing that needs to be added in there. And I think that should be included, our City Attorney.
I thought it was.
The City Attorney's what?
He works at the pleasure of the board.
But the people that, I mean, right now, Michelle couldn't let him go. I'm saying, I think our City Attorney and.
Michelle couldn't let him go.
Right, Michelle couldn't let him go.
Right.
But the Board can. But the Board can, yes, the Board can. Just as well as with the Chief, Chief and Sharon.
Yes.
And Alan Multry.
Those are all Board officials.
Yeah, but there is one that is not in there, and that is the City Attorney. And I think that definitely does need to be in there. Doesn't say anything, and I guess. And on page two, also, right down from the Code Enforcement Official. And I don't know, see, some of this is overlapping from what used to be Mayor to Town Manager. And we need to actually work on separation of the powers from Mayor to Town Manager. And looking at some of this stuff, I think we will need to do some work on it. Because right below it, it says prepare reports and agendas. And agendas, Laurie, is what you do. Well, agendas should be struck, struck out right there.
This is the Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting. It's the Board meeting. So the Board prepares, the Board would prepare the agenda.
But this says, Michelle does.
MTAF direction?
MTAF, yes.
But we, but we're, that's what we're working on.
Yeah, that's what we're working on. That's why I'm saying, are we gonna strike the word agenda there? Or we think agenda should be the Board of Mayor and Alderman?
Sure.
Okay. Stricken.
The only thing on the agenda, you could also complain, you know, she does their office meetings with the Department Heads, and she makes out that it's agenda for that.
Well, yeah.
That is part of the agenda.
How that meeting is gonna go.
Yeah, I think that falls more under the HR. Because this says, for submissions to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. She doesn't submit anything that she has personnel wise to us. Like the Department Head meeting, she doesn't.
Yeah, technically, she does. Reports for Alan Multry, Karen, Sharon.
Right, so she would prepare, she would prepare her report. The Town Manager would prepare their report for the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Yes. And somewhere in here, I think we need to have any goals for the future. Because I've, we not read it. I, if anybody else seen it, I think it should say, like, we need to have a, we need to start small. We need to have a two-year plan, and then five-year plan, and then 10-year plan. And I've not found that in, in here.
I think it should be smaller than that. I think it should be a one, three, or five.
Well, honey, we are on a one right now. We are one year the next year.
So we definitely can add that to it, that one of the.
I mean, that's gotta be one of the City Managers' goals, to push us to the future.
And I know personally, I believe that is, from, from how she's spoken to all of us, I do believe that. But we can, if you, you all feel we should put that in there to prepare.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be in there somewhere.
Two-year plans, one year, two years.
Yeah.
It's kinda like goals, you know, save goals for growth. This is for growth. So Carolyn had suggested a two, a two, let's go with a two, a four, and a six.
And Eric suggested wanting to consider even just a one-year goal.
You know, we're doing, you're doing a budget this year. This is the goal. By the time we do the budget next year, this is what.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Our budget right now is a one-year goal. Our, and the budget is a one-year goal.
So we can put that under our special functions of the job?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because when we turn our hands, we will be a family like this person, or whatever we have in here.
So one, three, and five, one, three, and six.
One, three, six.
One, three, six. Everyone in agreement?
All right, one, three, five.
I would give it five.
Five. Give a, give a two-year difference, and one, three, and five.
All righty. Did you have anything more specific that you'd like to point out?
I'm sorry, I was just reading here. I'm looking at, I'm like, my notes that I know.
Mayor, good chance of saving the board a little bit of work, spending time in the Town Charter. The Town Attorney works at the pleasure of the Board. It is not a, it's not something the City Manager can.
Right. But it's not listed in the Charter, though.
It is.
It is.
It actually says he serves along with the Town Record.
But somewhere in that Charter, it says specifically, the Department Heads cannot be touched. And it doesn't include you. I just think it needs to be a little quite fashion, that's all.
We are going to look at the Charter after the budget is.
That's a wonderful idea.
A comprehensive.
Yes.
Look at the Charter.
Like, right here, the personnel policy. I mean, right now, we all live at each other. We don't have any personnel policies right now. We don't have a employee quality measure right now. It's been worked on in years since.
So that is the. There are certain things that have to be done that were criteria.
Right. I just, you know, as long as, well, the people, I say that so the people know that this does have, we have said we were gonna do it, do it, do it, and we are now going to do it. We're not gonna, we're not gonna mess around. And we are gonna, they are.
Charter. Yeah, we, we need to get, after budget season.
Charter.
Because that's full on, that's gonna be comprehensive.
Yeah, but it doesn't have a right.
No, no.
No, it has not.
Got it.
But she came into one way, we know that. Like, if anyone's been related.
Other than that, does anyone have any additions, subtractions that they feel would be?
I'll take three, one, forty now.
So the Town Manager position description that is in the Charter will be overridden with the one that we put together. And then we'll go ahead and have an ordinance drafted with that in there. It will place Article 7, and then we'll have a moment.
I do have one question here. Since salary works at the pleasure of the board, so the Town Manager, she would inform us on how people are doing?
I hope so.
Since, since they work at the pleasure of the board, we have no clue on if everybody's turning in things they're supposed to turn in, and.
Do you mean Department Heads?
Department Heads.
A form.
Two of them. Yeah, keep us updated. I think we should be a part of that, and if it's not written in. Well, I mean, she could do that in her report, you know, or anything. If somebody, she's having any problems with anybody, you know, collision.
That would definitely be answered, that would be blocked.
We need to know. That one's gonna be dealt with, the information shared. I'm gonna send a petition, well, we can have it at an open meeting. And then that kind of was.
Oh, we can have it.
We can have it.
Oh, we can have it.
Oh, yeah.
It won't be very comfortable.
No, it's, well, and if you do wrong, you do wrong. And you tell the council. Do we want to judge anything for the qualifications?
I thought the qualifications were good. And, I mean, we're allowing managers while we don't feel qualified.
Yeah, but we're looking at, at possibly could be examined, too.
Sure, sure. And I understand that. I thought it was feeling real good. And what I, what I'm impressed with, with MTAF, they see all of the Town Managers, they know all of them. So this is a recommendation of what they feel would be for the Town.
Well, actually, there is one right here, they have like claim bullets. Theirs is bigger more claim than ours is.
Yeah. To be in a smaller town, it's, these are, these are good general. So if everyone, unless there are any other comments, any other, we can go ahead.
We're gonna do the video parts in it, or is that going to be handed down under Sharon for one of the other ladies in the office to be posting our videos and stuff online?
Well, she could be responsible, or whoever did, could be responsible against that, and not say who has to do it. I mean, if she's got standing due minutes and stuff, or Sharon.
Well, yeah, we know standing.
Or somebody that she has a common oversight over. Before.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You can't anybody do it, but she has.
That's what I'm saying.
A responsibility will fall back, you know, whatever it is, on line will fall back on.
I think Jean Anne did it for a while to be on this, did the videos and that, too. But that does need to be in there. I do have a question here. Hey, with salary, our, the board is the one that will give the raise or whatever, salary, since they work at the pleasure of the board. It's something we need to look at, the salaries. The salaries and how we will obey right now.
Are you thinking about establishing a salary for the Town Manager? The salaries and the height.
The salaries for the people. Is that what you're talking about? That works at the pleasure of the board, correct. So, yeah. I mean, if we're gonna do this, let's do it. You're talking about the Department Heads.
Department Heads.
Which we have never done. Well, in the Town. We don't even know who got raises, or we make out raises, or somebody got BPCs.
Well, if you put the budget, put it in.
We'll put it in.
It's not salary, but you put down the salary. You know, for eight year or two, they said, we'll give you 1% or 2% or 3% across the board, everybody. Then there's not anything to back, you know, I mean, it's, it's our. You know, I mean, it's, it's our.
Make sure it's fair. So we would have. So we'll have that, we'll have this paid out the next week, so we can see what.
And what we need to do. And it's time for.
I want to see that.
Evaluation, yeah. Then we need to, we need to think about how we would go with that. For status or what's been done, what's been accomplished, and how that would be given the evaluation process.
For the town manager?
Yes.
Okay. So did you all hear what she said she wants to add in?
I want to through Robert's rules to decide, I was having a side conversation.
Well, we're in a workshop.
We're going to knock your head off, Karen.
They still apply, but we need, we need to have a conversation. So Robert's rules does say that you can set aside Robert's rules if you think the conversation needs to be held that way, so.
We're still on the job description.
An evaluation, an annual evaluation. That would be in the job description, but that would be something the Board of Mayor and Alderman would have to add to their duties.
Should be in there.
Actually, yes.
Should be about.
Actually, I have a suggestion. I think we definitely, we need six months. And then why not, I'll be harmful three months? Because if you look at.
I don't want micro-managed.
No, no, I got one of that.
But, you know, I don't want, I don't want anybody being whoever it is, to go a whole year before we know what they're doing.
No, no, they need that, they need that.
So that wouldn't be in the job description, but we would, that would be, they need to work on that. We would have to make it organized, it would be organized. That, the, and are we just going to, I mean, is it just the town manager, or?
Like I said.
I mean, and I'm not. We, department heads, that, the town manager can do that, but is this like?
I don't want to micromanage anybody, but if you, I don't want to give them too much trouble.
None.
You know, everybody works better, you know, if, if, if you're looking at job performance. You know, and you know that your job performance is going to be looked at. And not, you know, not cracking down saying, you know, micromanaging this and this, you need to look at overall job performances of the department. It happens, it happens in, you know, out in the real world, and it should happen, it should happen in government as well.
Exactly, not about friendship. We can have this, we can have the Board of Mayor and Alderman do every six months.
Every six months.
But would you want them to town manager? Because that person's working directly with a department head. It would seem that a review by them and then submitted to the, to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Well, I think it's a wonderful idea to have them throw something in there. Maybe, maybe not, what do you think?
I mean, all the department heads work for the town manager, so if we're going to get progress reports or evaluations from the department heads, it needs to come from the town manager.
Maybe get some.
I don't know how we go about.
Maybe get some.
Looking at the town manager, and, you know, I don't have an answer to that.
And Paul's going to have.
Maybe a report every six months of what I've done, what I've accomplished, what I've worked on, you know, in detail.
And not just watching.
From the town manager about what she's done.
And we do this, we get these, but, but these now have got to start being checked off. You know, it's being stated what's in here, but we want to see completions. And that would be a wonderful way for evaluation.
Kind of difficult at some things, so.
It is. This is not easy.
No, it's not. But then, all for us, then I also have to work on a contract or, or exactly, a contract. That's one with Bristol.
So you want also to add in here, under average of six months, evaluation of four years. Okay, so that would be, that would be in the job description, but what would be in the job description would be an essential, a function of the job would be provide the reports of the.
Well, just like that as an example, and then we can probably get a little better and creative than that. But it's got to be a good start.
All right.
We are learning what to get.
Right.
Are you thinking? It's bigger than.
Yeah.
You want to.
Let's, let's start small. I'd like to see, you know, we're getting off, I'm getting off, my job is very important. Progress reports need to be more detailed, you know, from the department head. City managers should evaluate them accordingly. And come back to us, I know it has to be in a public setting, and I know it's not going to be easy for a city manager to sit in a public setting when you're, you're telling the board what, how you evaluated this department head. But to run efficiently, that's what has to happen.
Well, I know, Paul, does that have to be, is that public knowledge, or is that?
You're presenting it from the board and see.
It has to be, you know, actually, actually, anything we do with employees is public knowledge.
I don't, I don't.
It's so real.
That's a question for Paul.
That if we're going to.
Paul.
That if we're going to evaluate, she's kind of.
It's not like, it's a little correct.
Yeah, that's right. But we, but we don't get employee evaluations.
Well, we didn't, we didn't, we don't even talk about races, we did that. We didn't give any of that information. We didn't know.
We don't to evaluate.
I don't know, I would see the department head evaluation, but I would like to know that they're being done.
Exactly, and doing their job.
That, that is a problem.
We could get a.
Don't feel like this.
But I'd like to see that, I'd like to know that they're being done.
Sure.
Yeah.
So can your department then?
Yeah.
Quarterly evaluations or?
Over the department.
Semi-annually and.
Yeah, yes. Like I said, you don't want to micromanage people, is your plan?
Well, you run into HIPAA.
Well, you have to be very careful.
Stuff on it, and you can reach this and talk about personnel without being open.
You can.
Something like getting fired and hired.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable.
But.
Talking about people's performance, I don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate.
I think, like I said.
Well, then you, do you let people do whatever they want to do, and you have to go out and get somebody in order to make sure that things are done right?
No, putting in the job description that semi-annual reports be done, evaluations be done.
On the department.
On the department head, but not for us to see them, we don't.
No, not unless Michelle has a problem. And then if she has a problem, I'm sure she would bring it to the board. I mean, you know, I mean, I always told her, you know, she has a problem, you know, let me know, you know, bring it to the board.
She has a problem.
No, I'm saying if, say she.
She has to go to the board.
Right.
But, but you don't want.
I think she could handle it.
You don't want a town manager saying, well, I'm, I've had it with this person, and you say, well, you know, what are you basing this on, show me the evaluations. Then, then, then you have the evaluations already done.
Yes.
So they're required.
Right. And they're required. I think what Alderman, Eric is saying, we just kind of.
I think you got around to where.
We just want to know what's going on. We want transparency, and we want to know what's going on.
I want to make sure that, that we give her the power to know what's going on.
Exactly. Better for a job.
Yeah, it's much better for, she pulled people in for, you know, an evaluation, saying, oh, you know, the board, make, make do this.
But that, I mean.
Now, when you do your job, then you don't have anything to worry about.
But, but I think a town manager would do that, I think that would be, makes sense for a competent town manager to do.
I do too.
Yeah. So, but to put it in job description, then you're just making sure if they're.
Yeah.
So they know they have, they have a job.
And it's something to go.
And while you're on it, we mentioned that we're going to put in there that the town manager is required to do semi-annual evaluations. They don't need to go to us, but if there's a problem, that person, the town manager, will have those items to say, you know, this is my recommendation, we're having, we're having trouble, and then these are the evaluations to back it up. Can we go on that?
And we then make the department heads do the same thing they're doing. That would be up to the town manager.
Well, you suggested that.
I'm suggesting that, though.
That's all, we don't know what's going on.
Yeah, that's the only way, that's the only way the employees know that they're going to be helping.
Well, what I do, I think that. She's worked on a lot of it here in the last three months.
So I think when she first came in, she was frustrated that there was no system.
Yeah, she's been working on procedures.
She's done a lot.
Yeah. She, she really has, she's, she's done a lot, she's done a lot to bring the town back into compliance, but also.
You want to cover me?
You know, kind of.
I feel good, Jerry.
Oh, it is him turning.
Yeah, it is.
It is. But this, I feel like this has been very good, very helpful.
Yeah, we're all on the same page, we end discussing.
Of course, we are, aren't we?
I am.
Yes, just make sure.
This is a good meeting. Yeah, I am. I was saying, we are, of course, now this will come in the contract, when all this contract, it's going to have to have benefits and stuff, and then termination, and there's going to have to be some other things put in there. If there's travel, not travel, but relocation involved, this, we're not, but that, we want to follow that, kind of sneak off one of these and see what they can come up with.
Let's draft one, let's, let's look at it.
Exactly. Like I thought this was Bristol.
Right. And I love Bristol.
Yeah. So, I mean, these things around here, you know, you don't have to start all over again, is what I'm saying.
Sure.
You go ahead and steal a little, you know, way of borrow.
Just a little bit of copy and.
Copy and paste.
There's a written copy and paste.
Copy and paste.
All righty.
And we've got to have, shoot, references, references and fill them out of an application thing.
That's the application process, though, that would be really the job description, but.
No, that's something, the following of what's happening after.
When, when the board interviews people, that can be, that will be provided then.
Do we have any idea what the salary might be?
Well, I'll wait till Scott comes back. Well, but honestly, I think we know it's going to.
We know we can afford what we're going to afford.
That's right.
It's not much, it's not like Bristol, it's not like City, I mean, I was at that last, you know, one of the last workshops we had, I brambled on. City manager at Bristol, or city manager at John Sees, $192,000 plus $700 a month for vehicles.
For vehicles and.
Yeah.
They got a lot, they're a lot paper.
They're a lot more residents paying taxes to have the budget for it, where this little place.
I know, so I don't know, I don't think we're fault.
The neighborhood's a bitch.
I don't think we're fault, not somebody.
I don't think that's, that's not a map, that's not a map. Once we see the draft of the job description, it will be easier to put numbers to things because there will be benefits, there will be other things to think about at that point.
I think, I slightly did everyone that had the meeting that we did make the offer to Michelle to stay to the end of June, and see, this is why we need to get this done. We only have Michelle to the end of June.
Well, we discussed as a board that she'll be here till June, but I don't think we should automatically say we're done with her.
Well, you know.
I mean, but we have that impression.
We're all, we're all. One of the, one of the biggest responsibilities is writing that question. And, you know, so I don't think we can make that problem where, that we see the first draft. It's a little too early for that.
I think we can.
We may be surprised that we can.
I think we can really plus that.
I mean, we are saving money now, I mean, remember, we were paying that $68 million for the building. It's paid for, but it's paid for, but it's paid for.
Yes.
It's paid for, so that's money right there. And then we want to look at the budget and see, maybe some trimming or whatever.
That's a big thing.
Because we.
We need to see. That's all, yeah, I'm not saying that.
Put on it.
Yeah, we got a real point, and we got, and I know a root. But anyway, I don't think we're far out from what the offer was, and I thought it'd number at that, at the.
Job description, draft, and then budget, and then.
And it's right after the contract, you get all of our, the contract, we can have that.
Look at that.
That's really, we can't afford not to have the city manager.
But we.
I mean, we don't want to go back.
No, we're going to.
Which is why we really, 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 really have to give.
Unless, Jerry, you want.
She deserves our respect, and she deserves our kindness, and she's, she's done us a great service. And if she, if she were to walk away today, you all know what that means.
Oh, she is what, you know, you can't make somebody stay.
No, but I'm saying, let's, let's make it, let's make it worth her while here, let's, let's.
And we can keep her.
I can save this right here. I don't think.
Let's, I, let's be, let's treat her with respect and kindness, because she doesn't have to do this, and she could walk away, and if she does.
May I say some things? Let's not forget that night when we was going through so much, we had nobody, and she stepped up to the plate. Let's never forget the people that's been there for us and the people that have helped us. Don't ever make that mistake of forgetting who was there to help you when you need the help. And you know what we went through, Lori? You know what we went through, the tears, the prayers, you know what we went through. So let's not forget that night, we didn't have anybody, and we needed somebody. And she stepped up into the mix.
But also remember, she saved, saved us lots of money, she found things that were, she's been remarkable.
But Jerry's done it.
And she is still working on things.
Yes, and I, and I think, the good thing is, she's receptive to Jerry and to all of, you know.
Let's make this, somehow some way, it'll be okay. It'll be okay.
Agree, disagree, but we have to be civil.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
And not try to ruin the job.
Goes all the way, I do what you said.
I said, and neighborly.
Yeah, you're right, Dan. You're right down to me, you're right down to me.
I know, I know.
So Jerry's somewhere.
But being kind and nice to, to somebody, that, that works, that works, that's what.
It does, but we also, we also want to remember that she's, she is doing a lot of work, and we, we don't want to burden her with things that are not super necessary or important. I mean, the little things, we have to just.
Have to remember, she's always supposed to be working 30 hours.
That's what I call delegation in the office, though. Some of this stuff can be delegated. We have lost three, or two, or three, or four, the full videos that will not.
Okay, so if everything's part 40 hours a week, I mean, can we cut back on some things or whatever, once we.
The town manager's job is a 40-hour.
I know, she's, she's doing what we. But I'm talking about other employees. I mean, is everything 40 hours a week?
I'll give it a.
I'm telling you, they were in my neighborhood all night long last night.
No, sir, we are, we are going to.
We're not letting them.
We're not letting them.
Hold on, those folks.
Jerry, I was worried about you. I don't know. Let him walk.
Hey, I count four seconds when you stop, did that stop something?
Did you go one, one, a hundred thousand? Did you? All right, we're gonna go ahead and have our, so have we agreed that we're gonna go ahead and take this? We're gonna give it to Paul, we're gonna let him tweak it, get it back to us, and then we can do another workshop on this, or we can have a special meeting.
Or have a suggestion.
I think we need, we need to write it up first, and we send it to us, and let us look at it.
Individually without a meeting?
Yes. Individually without a meeting, if we don't like what we, we don't like what we say, then we might have to.
Right. As long as he does it in a PDF file, we can maybe, do the stick comments right there. I'll.
All right. So, that's, that's the second set of public comments. Three minutes, name and address.
I'm gonna read hers.
He's better, he's better speaking quicker.
And, and just remember, a lot of what you're saying, you'll want to also share with the, with the.
Yeah, yeah. That makes a lot of sense, really. That's a good way to go, get hard hills and. And they make, they got some money for, and merge it while the stuff gets done, and they, they would want to go up like the best they can.
And they're trying to do what you're, you're saying. They're trying, they're trying to do that thing.
You got Blue Ridge Comedy, they go there and say, hey, who's, anyone wants a cheap gig? Spoeder, River, here you go.
I would have to, sure.
Three minutes.
Yeah, tell them, they're deterred, they play, you know, cheap.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, there's some opportunities to get people in here. Barry Leback, twenty-three, forty-six, plus City Highlight, and I'm gonna finish our reading.
That seems quicker.
I'm gonna, I might not, who knows. Going to a public meeting may not be everyone an idea of a fun time. Remember how fortunate you are in a limited country to be so fully involved in our town. We have a chance to speak for or against issues that truly matter to us, such as who our city hires oversee emergency services, which roads get repaired, how our water plants operate, the rising cost of utilities. People can create change by attending these meetings and asking questions of leaders. It's only human to resist change even though, even when we know we need it. Someone's gonna object even the best way to move wealth, most wealth out of plans. That's why leaders should work on changing initiatives, expecting barriers, and creating, expanding barriers, and creating plans to deal with them. It's important to not just throw away data, throw data at people around a fun and burning platform that feeds their emotions. People make decisions based on their hearts, not their minds. You have to connect to something they care about. A burning platform may be, what we do to keep our children, grandchildren, we do that.
That ought to be a big one for most people.
When issues are framed that way, you'll be able to get momentum behind the change. Community bulletin boards, websites, and papers are ways to keep critical metrics in front and center. Just like a company, community needs objective metrics to know how healthy we are, to identify areas that need improvement, to engage progress over time. They need to see all of them together and updated regularly. Think about a dashboard, a car shows gas, oil, engine, performance, temperature, and so on and so forth. It's a way to constantly be asking, how's the community doing on areas that are important to us? Wages, crime, education, high school dropout rate. To attract business in town to community must be a walkable, living, vibrant town. Downtown, great restaurant shop, activities, and trendy residential areas, obviously, it's very cool. Young people in particular want to work, live, and plan the same area. When you start to drive and revitalize the town, downtown, it gets feedback and sparks growth in our community. Focus on education. A strong education system helps create a strong talent base and appeal to investors. Entrepreneurs rarely start out with a strong data, draft, and base skills. This is why it's important to educate, whether by monthly training, adult mental workshops, small business roundtables, and/or even having business conferences. Once you galvanize the owner of your citizens who are your business owners, they'll be catalysts for your change and sustain our shooting. The work of creating a vibrant community is never done. Use each success to grow more enthusiasm, grow the project base. Once you start having success, everyone starts feeling good about the community, and it becomes easier to keep, it becomes easy to keep the less successful projects bringing down momentum. Community pride is a huge multiplier effect. Remember, the erosion of trust in local governments can have lasting effects. When people see that their voice is normally being heard, and that those empower or help that to do it their way, with no input of citizens, it not only damages citizens' trust, but also damages the potential economic growth in the town.
Thirty seconds.
Generally, next meeting, we'll go back. Generally, when people are closely watching, it's, closely watching what their elected officials are up to, officials tend to do much of their job. Another tax citizens have at disposal is going to open, to file open record requests. They'd like to know more about a city manager's salary, how much money the school is being paid, legal fees, how much given destruction project costs, or almost anything of that nature, you can find the extra, find the request, request to government body. All fifty states have laws that protect citizens' right to learn more about the work of local government and seniors, and I'll leave there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, let's go to people, anyone else want to say, anyone else?
Basically, I just wanted to add that.
Chris Leback, please, 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 let's get it out.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you for hearing this. Would anyone else like to speak?
Can I just make a comment, something I heard earlier about trying to call the police department?
Yeah.
We've never had a dispatch, to my knowledge. All of our dispatch goes through Sullivan County.
Okay.
So if you see something, call nine-one-one, Sullivan County will dispatch us. All right. They, for, and here's a prime example, yesterday we had that issue going on, right? There was nobody in this office, so if something happened, we have a cooperating agreement with Sullivan County. So if this town needed help, their dispatch would send one of their deputies. So in the future, if you see it, listen, I don't like drugs, DUIs, distracted driving, a whole lot of stuff. Call nine-one-one, and we'll be there to respond, but calling the office, like, I work straight nights. So if you see something at night, and you try calling here, it's not gonna happen, I'm out on the rip. So.
But, look, I think what I'm trying to point out about it all and everything, I understand what y'all, what's happening, but like, with a lot of people that live here and stuff, you know, they, they keep complaining, you know, that their taxes go up, but yet they ain't even got a full, a police department.
We do.
We do have a full police.
But, you know, then why is there, I mean, I guess the town's looking to have somebody in the office, you know, like a regular police force.
I have, I didn't what Officer Boozak said. The problem with that, man, is Barry Silas, the general district attorney, he's in charge of all of law in Sullivan County. There has to be record of all calls made to Law Enforcement Association. The cost and maintenance of having that in this town would be very substantial, and the work did speak about, you know, our taxes and all that.
Right.
It has to be recorded. It has to be, it'll be brought in front of the court of what the call was, who called, at what time, and those records are held by Sullivan County Dispatch.
Well, I understand all that and everything, and I'm fully, you know, not knocking anything. All I'm, all I'm saying is, you know, I feel like that one of our things that we really need to work towards is trying to make sure that we can work to get the funding for the police department to have the help that they need to, to keep its staff around the clock.
And also, and I don't know specifically for all the details, but I know this because you just told me. And it's like, and that's the thing, it's like, I tried to call the police, and I didn't know that they called nine-one-one. And that's like a miscommunication issue, that's all that is.
Yeah, it's, I would simply say, call nine-one-one, everything's recorded, if I need something, if we have to go to court, we can get it right directly from the county. Our department is staffed twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
And we are available twenty-four hours.
Well, I mean, I'm looking, like I said, it's just, how can we raise enough money